So under item eight A, the executive session, which was set for 20 minutes will, the first one will be only for 10 minutes with action anticipated. Tonight, we have two council members who will be attending remotely via Zoom. They are council members Frye and Councilmember Mokler. And they've been upgraded to panelists. Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. The first item up tonight, we have the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
All right. Good evening, Council President, the city councilors, members of the public. Got a couple of slides to share with you. All right, just wanted to give you a kind of snapshot of recent work on Cascade Trail. This is if anybody was down there recently, you'll notice the street was completely torn up and there was some trenches in the ground and some holes. This is this is kind of pictorial of what started and through the process. There's the completely redone street and then, of course, finished product. 590 feet of storm water drain, five catch basins, manholes, new ring and lid assemblies. All all told, it was $142,000 project and it was completed on September 11th. And this repaired the sidewalks, curbs and gutters and replaced a failed road surface. And we, as we worked together internally, we were working on strategies and techniques to increase our output around the city so we can show more work like this. So just I wanted to show you, highlight the capabilities of our staff. This was done internally. All right, next slide. Poet Laureate Sarah Stanky has been working on a number of initiatives, so I thought it was important maybe bring you up to speed. Now she's got a monthly online mini workshop series that she's developed, cultivating partnerships throughout the community. City Arbor Day Celebration in April and this recent fall event, Fall for the Arts Event over the weekend were events that Sarah contributed poetry to. It was awesome. This has been awesome work on her part and she just continues to promote community connections, raise visibility of the arts, of course, and expanding creative engagement across the city. So more to come on that. Next slide, please. This, you know, I, towards the end of summer, just wanted to, this is kind of a light update, but we're getting the trees in the ground over at Haddon Park and it's obviously we've we've overcome a lot, a lot of perseverance on the city's part to get to the finished product. And wanted to share, if anybody hasn't been down there lately and was wondering where the trees were. They are going in today and we all know the challenges of resisting what disease brings. The climate, creating some weird weird weather patterns that aren't necessarily predictable. And and of course, the shade cover is so incredibly important when we get these warmer days. This, these trees are picked to to meet all of the criteria I just mentioned. So just wanted to share that with you. The Sinclair Inlet Cleanup, again, September 20th. This is a, this is for ages 13 and up, so I'm checking the audience. We've got one 13 year old, so but this is, this is a great family friendly event and you sure do a lot of good when you go out there and clean up our shoreline. And so we, I just wanted to promote that September 20th, the City of Bremerton will once again be partnering on this biannual work effort. I think we have one more slide, Dave. Yes, the City of Bremerton is again our annual free tree giveaway. And September 20th, 1 to 3 p.m., you can see the Penn Oak and the Forest Green Oak are the two featured trees. There are 100 of them available. And that is it tonight. You'll notice a focus tonight on our beautiful environment in the City of Bremerton. So that's it, council. Nice to see you. I hope you're enjoying the last beautiful summer we're having. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, Claims and Check Register. Approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 412-243 through 412-395 and EFT numbers V44392 through V44500 in the grand total amount of $3,991,339.57. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending August 31st, 2025 in the amount of $1,111,970.75. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending August 31st, 2025 in the amount of $423.15. B, minutes of council meeting, September 3rd, 2025. C, minutes of study session, September 10th, 2025. D, purchase of Ford F-750 truck with hook lift system and snowplow. E, conservation grant agreement with Puget Sound Energy for LED retrofit phase six. F, contract modification agreement number seven with Parametrics, Inc. for engineering services for the Kitsap Lake Park renovation project. G, resolution number 3404 to modify parking on a portion of Almyra Avenue from head in to back in angle parking. And H, local program state funding agreement with WashDOT for the Sixth Street Active Transportation Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hoover. So if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent agenda items, and again, that's items A through H, the consent agenda, not to be confused with public recognition, which will come after the consent agenda, okay? We only ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Having said that, does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Mr. Sorensen, can you check online, please?
Nobody has their hand up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
For a second.
I have a motion, a second. Call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Rebulowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. So next up, as promised, is public recognition. This is to address the council on any issues not already on the agenda, which also includes our lone general business item tonight. Public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. This is not interactive, so we're not going to go and banter back and forth. The council instead is here to listen to your concerns and questions. Also, a gentle reminder that now that it is election season, please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There will be public comments accepted via Zoom tonight if they made arrangements through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 or sending an email to city.clerk@bremertownwatt.gov at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. And Ms. Hoover, I believe we have two callers.
That is correct, and we do ask that they raise their hand through Zoom.
So Mr. Sorensen, you be my reminder, please, in case. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Time or system will be used so that everyone is treated fairly. With that, I now open up for public recognition.
Jose Camacho. Friends of Smith Cove, rock the block. I started coming to council and planning commission for these comments, usually objections, because I discovered that city bureaucrats just outright lie about formal public processes. The Evergreen Point project was rigged by Andrew Spencer's DCD. And 22 months later, it's still pending and you all are stonewalling. So related to that, this problem is endemic to Bremerton's government. And as a Puerto Rican, we quickly learn that we need to discern who are real allies and who are fake allies, just like MLK said about white liberals. What I have discovered is a lot of council members pretend they care about the homeless. They want to do something about public bathrooms, yada, yada, yada. And then I read the law that you are supposed to be knowledgeable about the city charter. Basically, it's structured so that the mayor cannot stop you. You have the power to override any veto by the mayor. But if you guys want to make public bathrooms for your fellow Bremertonians, you can make a law and the mayor has to eat it. And it's as simple as that. It's right there in writing. And you guys have actually overridden the mayor's veto in 2022. The noise nuisance. So you've done it. It's in the city charter. So instead of admitting that, instead of being honest and saying you don't actually care about it, you've lied to the public. You blamed the mayor because you've allocated 10 grand, but according to you guys, he won't implement it. Us poor council members, we're powerless. Oh, we can't do anything about it. So you guys absolutely cynically have lied to our faces. And the problem with American democracy is that it does depend on good faith. It does depend on trust. And as skeptical and cynical as I am, it is very natural to trust even you guys. So we do until we lose that trust and we start making inquiries. And in this case, you guys can hide from this. If you don't want public bathrooms for the homeless, then say so. And some of you haven't, so kudos to you. But some of you have pretended to care, pretended to be allies and lied to our faces. The mayor is not the obstacle here. You are lawmakers and you are refusing to make law to help the homeless. Portable bathrooms have been begged for for years, since at least 2023. And you guys are just shameless liars.
Good evening, council members. My name is Josh Bartels. I'm the pastor of Westside Baptist Church and a resident of this great city. I deeply appreciate your work on the behalf of our people. Your job demands a level of wisdom, humility and dedication that I deeply appreciate. So thank you. As a Christian pastor, my responsibility is to speak the truth, to open people's eyes to the world as it is and not as they want it to be. The assassination of Charlie Kirk this last week should be a wake-up call to civic leaders everywhere in America. And I want to make sure that you hear this wake-up call addressed directly to you today. This tragedy occurred because our society has turned its back on reality. God created humanity in his own image. He created humanity as male and female. Marriage was divinely, is divinely ordered to be the joining of one man with one woman for one life, for the production of children and for the good of the world. All sexual deviation from this norm that fly under the flag of pride are violations of divine law. They are in fact a rebellion against reality itself. And I want to speak about transgender ideology specifically because it is inherently violent. Rather than helping those who are tragically suffering from gender dysphoria, transgender ideology tells them to chemically and even surgically do violence to their own bodies. The operating principle behind this ideology then is that violence may be perpetrated against the human body to conform that body to support our own desires. It should be no surprise then when members and supporters of the transgender community then take this principle to its logical conclusion and commit acts of violence against the bodies of those who do not support their delusions. Transgender ideology has resulted and will continue to result in brute force violence like we witnessed this last week. This chamber has publicly and repeatedly supported pride in Bremerton. And by supporting this destructive philosophy, you are undermining the aims that you seek to achieve as public servants. You want peace, but you promote deviance. You pursue justice, but you deny reality. If you want to lead this community well, then you must revoke any and all public support and promotion of pride events, refuse to promote pride in any of our city ordinances and resist any state and federal pressure to support these lifestyles. The answer to these destructive lifestyles is and always will be the antithesis of pride, and that is humility. Humility before your God, gratitude to him for your existence, confession of your sin and throwing yourself in a humble dependence on the mercy and forgiveness of Jesus Christ. This is true wisdom and the only path to a peaceful society. Thank you.
Michael Simons, resident of Bremerton District 3, in my personal capacity, just wanted to get up here and denounce everything that man just said. That was harmful, hurtful hate speech. You are allowed to have your opinions. Your opinions stop as they leave your body and affect someone else's. His opinion will affect other people. His words will affect other people. If you're trans, you are loved by me, you are loved by our community. If you're gay, LGBTQ, black, any other minorities, you are loved by this community. You are not to be denounced by religion. So thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna do my best. Adrian Wright, District 2. One of raising today to raise public discourse, to quote Descartes, we may not agree, but I will fight, defend your right to speak. I move against and speak against calling anything hate speech. It is typically speech that you disagree. And there are a lot of things that we may even agree on that I will fight passionately, but I'm against laws that are against our right to free speech. Dialogue with officer points of view and politics today is so important, particularly to bridge gaps and mend feelings, restoring particularly, we need to push particularly as government bodies to restore civil liberties, constitutional rights, et cetera. As a country, we particularly need to be united and particularly in my political bent of classic, being a classical liberal, going back on the founding principles, whether they be Locke, Voltaire, Jefferson, Franklin. I grew up in Olympia in the 90s where I was persecuted by a group called Black Bloc. Today it's called Antifa. I was frightened by them, persecuted by their ideology of socialism, radical leftism and anti-Americanism and particularly its values. They use words against just regular folk that would say things like KKK, Nazi fascist as an excuse to use physical violence and threats, emotional violence and threats and verbal abuse. In light of the current assassinations, I beg for unity, particularly in this community. I beg, want to bring up the subject that as a Washingtonian, particularly from early 1900s and late 1800s, family came here, were peaceable with and lived in harmony with the Native Americans. Not always said in the history books. I want to preserve a Washington where we can all get along harmoniously. And also remember the Civil War and all that transpired between people that conflicted and couldn't resolve their issues. Have an ancestor, minus a Mayflower, which I feel strongly about, that preserved fighting against the KKK. They fought for the Union and almost took out Nathan Bedford Forrest.
You have the one online. Do you want to go to that one?
Ms. Long will go ahead and go online. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
Here I am to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I was a little late because I was at my grandson's field day, track and field day. So here goes. If anyone would like to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know that we have all had our emotional moments this past week or so. People have been killed and people are expressing their opinions. I just hope that everybody is careful not to raise the temperature. I believe that everyone is entitled to their opinion. And that's what it is. It's an opinion. May not be the truth, may not be factual, but it's their opinion. I would like to say that I am a conservative, raised my children in a conservative home, married to the same man for 57 years. And I do believe in God. Can't say that I'm a real faithful follower at a church service or anything like that, but I do believe in God. And I think we all need to take a step back and think about where we came from, who we really are and what we hold true to our beliefs in being a union of people. The United States of America has risen out of the dust and brought our country and our nation to where it stands right now. And I just hope that people will be tolerant and share their love. And if you have a difference of opinion, live your life according to your specific will and you probably will be fine, but don't try to force it on anybody else. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sorensen, sir, we're gonna go ahead and go online and then we'll get to you as well, I assure you. Mr. Sorensen, do we have anybody with a hand up?
Kimmy, Kimmy Seibens. Seibens?
She did. She do her 20. I need to be fair. She did do her 24 hours? Okay, Ms. Seibens, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Eric. Hi, this is Kimmy Seibens, a registered nurse representing myself and the Bremerton Homeless Community Coalition. This past year, the number of unsheltered residents in Kitsap County has unfortunately more than doubled. Over half are actually right here in Bremerton. Today, I'd like to address the $10,000 that was allocated for public restrooms that was approved by this council but never implemented. For many years, our unhoused neighbors and advocates have highlighted this urgent need, yet we've seen no action with the responsibility consistently shifting between your offices. I respectfully don't know whether the council understands its legislative authority or not. They actually can advance this initiative with a super majority vote of five to two. They have already demonstrated their support by allocating that 10 grand. I just, I haven't been able to figure out what's preventing them from exercising this option. It's very concerning to me when Councilmember Coughlin stated on June 4th that, quote, "I really want to iterate a theme here. Council allocated money for downtown restrooms. We gave it to administration to implement it and it wasn't implemented," end quote. I'd like to remind everyone listening of a Washington state law, RCW 4220040, which states that public officers who knowingly make false statements in their official capacity are committing a gross misdemeanor. Because he is a NASA scientist and someone running for mayor, I have a very hard time believing he doesn't know how the government works. Being dumb is not a defense for this intelligent person. To prove that this law is applied, just look at a previous mayor of Langley, Washington, who in the past spent 15 days in jail after being found guilty of the same gross misdemeanor. The judge in that case stated that he had betrayed public confidence, asserting that someone who commits such acts should not remain in office. As a friendly reminder, I would also like to iterate something. The city council, they create legislation like to address the need for public restrooms. If Mayor Wheeler disagrees, he can totally veto it. The council could then override that veto with a five to two vote. Should the mayor not enforce the law, legal remedies through a writ of mandamus can compel him or else he would be held in contempt of court. And that's it. It's not as complicated as you are presenting it. Our unhoused community members cannot keep waiting while you keep dodging responsibility. They deserve real action from the body that is both the funds and authority to address this need. If what you need is more political will, please tell us. We're here to help. Our coalition can provide the support you might need. Currently, there is such a lack of transparency and so much political double talk. I honestly cannot speculate on what your true barriers are unless you tell us and let us help you. Thank you.
Right, Mr. Sorensen, before we go back to the public in present here, can we, and one more time?
The other, the other person doesn't have the hand up.
All right. Well, if that person who got approval raises their hand between now and when I close it, please let me know. I won't ask again. Sir, go ahead.
My name is Nate Axtehl. I live in Bremerton. I was born and raised in Bremerton and I love Bremerton. I'm raising kids, hoping that they grow up to love Bremerton and serve here. I want to say I'm from, I'm with Westside Baptist Church. That was my pastor that came up and I want to agree with everything that he said. And I'm thankful that he said it. I also want to agree with some things that my neighbor said right after him, came up and said, if you're trans, I love you. And if you're LGBTQ in any of the iterations of the acronym, then I love you. And love, I guess different people have different definitions, but my definition of it wouldn't mean that anything you say or do needs to be affirmed, especially if it's destructive. If it's destructive, what you're doing, self-destructive even, then the loving thing to do is to find opportunity to tell you that it's destroying you and try to help you see a different way. I want to agree with him and say that I love you if that's how you identify, but I want to disagree with what he said when he was talking about how his words will impact people, his words. It seems to fit into this ideology that results in the kind of violence that we saw last week. This ideology that says these words are actually violence towards you. And when you say these words are violence, then you you give permission for violence to come back at the person who's saying them. And so if this redefinition continues, if people continue to use this, this modified definition of violence, then permission is given for people to act violently and it's going to keep happening. And I just want to say it's a lie that these words, when people say things you disagree with, then the right thing to do is to engage. Let's, let's talk, let's talk it out and help each other see each other's humanity. And if the words that we have have any merit, then maybe we'll convince each other of what we think is true.
My name is Robin Weldon and I'm from District 3, Bremerton resident. First of all, I'm not religious, but I have read Jesus's words and there is no, there's nothing these people say that is even close to what Jesus said. So that's what I'm going to say. I want to say that I adopt Jose Camacho and Kimmy Seibens' comments as my own. I would like to adopt Jose Camacho's and Kimmy Seibens' comments as my own. I'm here to implore you to put a moratorium on the Bremerton inhumane anti-camping ordinance. This ordinance has been in place for two years since September of 2023 and is used to roust, harass, throw away survival property, documents, personal items and medications of unhoused people. It gives police the power to harass, fine, arrest and push out unhoused residents outside Sydney. It gives police the power to harass, fine, arrest, and push out unhoused residents outside Sydney limits. I was there filming on the first sweep of the tent community on Memo K. Way on November fourth, 2023. As the city workers zipped up each tent, a heavy claw then crushed each tent's contents, and then the property of those unhoused residents was thrown into the back of a garbage truck. The property that was destroyed included survival gear, the documents, medications, books, toys, laptops, memories, everything they needed to survive. At least one cat in a tent was crushed and thrown away, and one man was almost crushed the first sweep. The tent community who found people of the content community who found some comfort and support with each other on NLK were only allowed back from being held behind barriers by police after everything they had in the world was destroyed. I spoke to an unhoused woman who appeared to be the camp's caretaker, who watched out for everyone in the community. She told me that she asked the police, where are we supposed to go? And the answer from a police officer was, it's not my problem. We are going into another winter. Not ending this brutal, unjust, inhumane, unconstitutional, and immoral ordinance means that each and every one of you will be responsible for more torturous suffering and deaths of our unhoused neighbors. For the last two years, advocates and the homeless, homeless sorry, for the homeless, concerned residents, and our neighbors who are unhoused, many of whom have since died, have pleaded with you to end this anti-
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chance Corey. I'm a member of the Fifth District, or I live in the Fifth District. Before I start my other comment tonight, I do want to encourage you all to continue to support Pride and its efforts to the community. It is a welcoming space. It is an opening space, and it is a space that makes for better business and better community in Bremerton. Tonight, I'd like to address the Race Equity Advisory Committee. For two years now, this committee has had no appointments. That's two years of silence. Meanwhile, sorry. Two years of silence. Meanwhile, the city employs a diversity and community engagement manager. Yet there's no visible strategic plan for this position, no goals, no accountability. This is not just an oversight. It's a failure of leadership. My understanding is that the responsibility sits squarely with the mayor's office. And if equity is truly a priority, then we need action, not lip service. Bremerton deserves appointments to this committee. Bremerton deserves a plan for the engagement manager. Bremerton deserves leadership that treats equity as a living commitment, a day-by-day promise, and an action plan. What I'm asking from the council tonight is to vote on an action plan to force the mayor's hand. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Diane Iverson, resident of Bremerton District Seven. I'd like to talk with you this evening about accountability and the role of the council versus the role of the mayor as defined by Bremerton's city charter. As you know, I am a member of the Bremerton Complete Streets Committee. I have been a member of the committee since its inception in two thousand twenty-one, four and a half years ago. Their original ordinance to complete streets was passed by council in 2018. Let me read to you its vision statement. The city of Bremerton's vision for complete streets is of a community in which all residents and visitors, regardless of their age, ability, or financial resources, can have access to an affordable, safe, and accessible transportation system that meets or exceeds their travel needs. I'd like to thank the council for passing the original Complete Streets ordinance in 2018 with the above-mentioned vision. It was and is a good law, but a law is only as good as its enforcement, and that is not the council's responsibility. Based on our own city charter, enforcement of the law is the mayor and his staff's responsibility. Here lies my frustration in the Complete Streets ordinance. There is a section on performance measurements, section eleven point one zero point zero nine zero performance objectives. The Complete Streets program will track the performance measurements for the following objectives: improve health, improve access, improve safety. The Director of Public Works and our Designation report to the Public Works Committee on a biannual basis on the performance measures listed above and the extent to which the objectives have been met. There has been no biannual report on the performance measurements listed above, none, zero, nada. It's been four and a half years since the committee has been formed and over seven years since the Complete Streets program was authorized, but still no report on the above-mentioned performance measurements. Again, I'm not upset with council. It is not council's responsibility to present the findings. It is the mayor's responsibility, and it has not been done. Accountability is important to the residents of this city and to you, the council. Too often, like tonight, council gets blamed for the inaction of the mayor and his team. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rema Schultz. I own a business in Charleston on Calo. That's related to what I want to talk about tonight. On the corner of Ninth and Calo, there's an empty building. When I opened my store, spread supplies two years ago, I picked the location in part because of the indoor go-kart business that was in that building. I figured if business was slow, I could close the store and go get in a few laps. I honestly love driving fast. I bought a hundred-lap pass shortly before I signed my lease. The day I got the keys to my store, there was a sign on the door saying that the business had been closed. Who's laughing? Before Dirt Cart was in the building, it was vacant for many years. It's now been vacant for two years. About eighteen months ago, a beloved community hub, Slippery Pig, tried to open a second location in the building. There are many reasons why they couldn't do that, which I won't be getting into right now. Most recently, a local chain wanted to open in the building. They did not want to use it as a retail space. The place is huge, and there's established competition in the area already. They wanted to use it as a warehouse. Neighborhood businesses like mine were happy they were going to move in. The business had partnered with the building owner to wrap the windows with a gorgeous art piece about Charleston, our history and our future. The business went through a long process of shopping for spaces, finding one, and working with the property manager and the building owner to make necessary upgrades. So far, the building owners have invested over $50,000 in their building. They really want to get someone in there. The HVAC is up to date. All the electrical has been updated. They replaced six huge windows and much more. The building owners really are trying to get the building occupied. And that's exactly what we need in Bremerton right now. So why is this business not moving into the building? Because they were not, they were not going to allow public access in the building. It was to be used as a warehouse, like I said. The city did not approve their permit for this reason. They said the location required that the building have some public access. Here we have a business that wanted to contribute with their seven hundred square feet art mural, and they were turned down because of zoning. It's stated in the 2020 Charleston redevelopment plan, paid for by the city, that business, that building uses in Charleston should get some wiggle room. Considering this business only wanted to lease it for three years, they would have made considerable improvement to the area, not detriment, because there was no public access. Any business activity in that building would have been fantastic. There's a lot of illegal activity around there. I often come to work to piles of trash around my store, or worse. Last week, there was a truck that had been stripped in the parking lot. It was sitting on rocks. The wheels were gone. The insides had been removed. And when the tow truck came to remove the truck, gas spilled out of the gas tank all over the ground. That would not have happened if there had been a business in that building. The last thing I want to say is Bremerton is gay and proud, and I love all of your support.
Okay, thank you. All right, last call for public recognition. Okay, seeing none, I close public recognition. I'll turn again to Ms. Hoover, this time for the general business item.
General Business Item Six A, Renewal of Professional Services Agreement with Imperial Parking Inc. for Parking Enforcement and Management Services. Our presenter tonight is Contracts Administrator Melinda Monroe.
Welcome, Ms. Monroe. The floor is yours.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me. I am here to present the renewal of our Parking Enforcement and Management Agreement, and I have also a 2025 overview of our parking program so you can see where we've been and where we're going and how this contract serves to meet those needs. So I'm going to start with our, here we go, five-year recap, five-year action recap. So the last time we had such a large renewal was in December of 2019, and that set us up for some pretty large actions in the parking program in 2020. Purchase of our mobile ALPR system, purchase of our cloud-based court-integrated enforcement software, and rollout of our online residential parking permit program, our Scoff Law enforcement, which equates to escalation of fines for repeat offenders. The next four years included some additional changes to the contract in '23, but in between times, you'll see that we kept busy. We had, of course, our parking COVID response in '21, but maintained our, our improvement policy procedures, updating our residential permit policy and also municipal codes in '22, installing our first van pool parking stalls and providing the enforcement around those, and updating garage and lot, lot signs across the city, notably in, on the east side of Bremerton for the first time. And in '23, we did update our agreement again and purchased a Nissan Leaf, a charging station, the Go4 vehicle, and our second LPR system, and we expanded our enforcement zones. Last year in '24, we had our first booting, booting policy rollout. Our, our contract at the time did not really address that, but we were able to squeeze in some booting and really the practice of that. And we did reallocate enforcement hours as we had available in that contract. And that brings us to where we are today in '25. And you'll see our coverage now is all across the city from the Portertrid Annex area, which actually is not in that map. This is actually image of our GIS tracking of our LPR systems in our two LPR-enabled vehicles. We actually have three enforcement vehicles, but these are from the two LPR-enabled vehicles. You'll see the smaller version includes our downtown core enforcement and, and our required daily beats in that area, and we are able to meet and exceed that. We're able to use that vehicle in our garages and lots and, and really have increased our efficiency in that regards 500%. It's just quite amazing how quickly we can get through that now, and no problem for us to several times hit those parks and other areas that our low-speed vehicle is, is capable of going. And then in our larger, larger circle that I have there, you see our, our primary, our leaf vehicle hitting our residential permit zones primarily with our daily and weekly beats. But then we respond in two ways across the city in areas that are not necessarily beat-driven, that receive, you know, daily and weekly enforcement, and that is through our random patrols that those happen across the city. I don't know if this is the best map for that. It's a hard thing to capture, but just becomes all bullittable is what happens. So and then our on-call random responses, and that's just responses to our daily requests for service, adding that in to all of those other responses that we have going every day across the city. So today, we are preparing for a long-term renewal with holding rates actually steady with a current decrease, although this agreement does allow for increases as necessary. We are providing a continued focus on safety response first, signage improvements in our parking facilities and on-city streets, management of our online parking apps, our third-party affiliates, Paybyphone and SpotHero currently, with a reevaluation of our meters, and we've reduced planned reduction in our surface lots for some of our physical meters and a continued assessment of those meters. We've added scheduled enforcement beats in residential zones, such as in the east side, which is somewhat new for this city, but there has been a demand and probably larger demand than we can actually meet, but we meet a little bit of it now. And in our city parks and lots, which we're able to accomplish through our streamlined enforcement that our updated technology has provided us. This agreement addresses our current equipment, tools, and codes, but it is flexible. It does allow us to consider new technology. And it is, it does prepare us to respond and pivot to potential changes to the residential parking permit program in any on-street parking in commercial districts that we may want to consider in, in the next five years. And so with that, council, I'm open for questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? So during study session last week, parking was a hot topic. No one in the public wants to talk about parking? Go ahead, please.
My name is Rema Schultz. I don't know if I have to reintroduce myself. The only thing I want to say is sometimes that they will drive through these streets so fast, and if that can be part of the conversation that we have with this company, that they need to follow the city laws and obey the posted speed limits, that would be excellent.
Well, Ms. Monroe handles this contract, as you know, or you know tonight, and I'm sure she listened and got that, and I'm sure she'll make mention of that. Thank you. Mr. Sorensen, you check online for me, please. Anybody have their hand up? Answer is no. Okay. No other comments from the public. I'll turn to the council for a motion.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
So let's go ahead and the, the actual motion.
Apologies, I temporarily withdraw my second.
I move to approve the agreement with Imperial Parking Services as presented and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Coughlin?
Yeah, I'll kick off with a, with a big thanks to Melinda for going through this contract. So we had talked about it earlier on the year. It came to a council study session. It was lightly attended. Appreciate bringing it back to our Parks Finance Investment and Parking Committee. We went over in detail in that committee and the changes from the last contract. Caught basically one minor clarification that was updated. Great to see. And then we talked about it in the full study session last week, and we thought parking is something that we hear about a lot, especially downtown, some other areas of the city, and just really important to have it on general business. So I really appreciate the nice presentation of everything that, that you've been working for in the last, last five years and the update. I want to say for some of the other conversations related to parking, some of the conversations we had in committee and study session, is I think there have been many great suggestions from the community. For example, moving downtown parking from one or two hours to three or four hours. And this contract, if that decision is made, would, would allow it. So it is not set one way or the other in this contract. That can be determined outside of it. Other great suggestions like making the parking garage, you know, free on weekends or changing hours. If decisions are made in the future for dedicated residential parking passes- If decisions are made in the future for dedicated residential parking passes and a lot of other great suggestions by community. So going forward, I think this is a good contract. I would like to see, though, before this one's up, you know, in five years, we have an opportunity to now start doing, I think, a deep dive and looking at other cities, looking at cost-effectiveness of doing enforcement contracting, doing it in-house, seeing best practices and really tracking the cost benefit of this contract over time. That said, I know our discussion too is that we can amend this contract if needed to either increase or decrease the amount of enforcement. So it's good to see we have the flexibility. I appreciate that. The only question I did hear, just someone I talked to individually, was from Ms. Monroe. If there are any complaints against in-park employees, if someone had a bad interaction, which I think is rare, but if that were to happen, or there were, you know, somebody was going too fast in one of those carts, what's the process that a citizen can use to bring that to attention?
You can simply reach out to me. My name and phone number and email address is on the city website on our parking pages. Feel free to reach out to me anytime. Happy to address that with you. And, you know, Imperial Parking Services is certainly more than one person, definitely more than one employee. They are committed to excellence. So if you have any concerns, please reach out. I'd be happy to help you.
Excellent. Thank you. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain. Any comments?
Yeah, I think that, well, I mean, I'm looking at the additional time that's going to be allotted for immobilized cars. And I'm curious, and I wasn't in the committee, maybe I should have deferred to another committee member, but I'd like to know a little bit more about the additional hours that are allocated for immobilized cars.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a procedure that we use every month where we address vehicles that, you know, have a larger number of citations, plates, that have a larger number of citations. And then those vehicles may be considered for impounding if they qualify per the BMC. And that's 10-10-110, Section 2, that allows them to be impounded. Or in our case, since in-park does not impound, boot those vehicles. And then if they are found in violation again, then we will be, you know, booting that vehicle. We've started with 15 hours a month, which doesn't seem very much, but the way that's broken down is by the actual booting time. So it just simply doesn't take very much time to, kind of, you've done all this work on the vehicle, it's qualified. That's just, that's counted within their normal enforcement time. And then the boot time is pulling the boot out of the vehicle, making some checks and verifying with everybody this really does qualify, going through those verifications, and then actually, you know, booting that vehicle. And it just simply isn't that much time needed to complete the procedure. So it does seem like kind of a low amount of hours. That actually is potentially more than we need. But what we're really hoping to do with booting is to make it an effective enforcement and to actually provide education and to just really catch the attention of this person to say, hey, we have a way to save you money. Instead of paying these citations every month, we would like to help you find a new way to park, a new way to commute, a new way to to use our transportation system. And if this is what we have to do to catch your attention, we'll do it. You know, they don't like doing it. They do not like doing it. But, you know, it is sometimes necessary. Sometimes it's really hard to get someone's attention and just, you know, educate them. And so that's really the goal. And I would say we're starting to see that move in the right direction. We do, we are able to use our LPR system to create efficiency around that, you know, from those vehicles and, you know, create our hits and notices. So we're ready for it now. We've got it built in, and we're starting to see that need will change.
Yeah, I know that that's probably, in a lot of ways, I'm really excited about the, you know, the changes because there are some times where cars will get abandoned, actually abandoned cars. There's repeat offenders who need a little reminder that maybe they shouldn't, you know, be parking in a certain area, right? Can you tell me a little bit about, so this is specifically, these hours are specifically for booting vehicles or for the processing that it takes to boot vehicles?
Correct.
Okay, I think it's probably a good time to just refresh my memory and the public as well about, I think one thing that I'm concerned about is enforcement that's done on folks who are living in their cars. Can you tell me a little bit about that process?
So that is done very lightly. And in fact, we really cannot do very much. We cannot impound a vehicle if you are living in that vehicle. There's case law that prevents us from doing that. And we are going to remind you, we are going to do as much as we can to help you. We're going to bring in our homelessness response team, Common Streets. And they're really going to be the person that's going to be working with you. And our parking enforcement team is only there to support them when we have people where, you know, it can get messy. Are you living there? Are you just visiting for the day with somebody that is actually living there? So those sorts of things where you have situations that are just somewhat messy. But when somebody is actually living in their vehicle, our parking enforcement team is not the one to be responding. And they really can't. They're not trained for it. They're not equipped for it. It really has to be our homelessness response team.
And this isn't a new issue. So can you tell me the process? And there's nothing new in the contract about this. I'm just regarding, you know, I just wanted to kind of know the process because with these additional hours for these vehicles, the process is the in-park would notify the city or you or Common Streets. Can you tell me, I mean, with the additional hours for these stalled vehicles, I'm concerned that there's going to be some folks who are going to be, I guess I'm concerned about folks who are living in their cars.
And we would never, yeah. So we use booting for what we call our chronic nuisance violators. So those are vehicles that fall, it's in Section 10-10-110, which is really exciting reading. And it just basically is saying that if you have six or more violations within either the downtown core or the residential area of overtime violations, that we could qualify you for booting or, you know, to be booted. Now, that could apply to a vehicle that's thing they do, the very first time they go out, they go, there is somebody that this vehicle looks like it's being lived in. There are belongings around. There are shades up. There's a dog in the vehicle, all those things that are indicators. And they simply stop. And we are getting our request in through Bremerton 1. That goes out to all city divisions. So it's very helpful for you to use Bremerton 1, and they can respond right back into Bremerton 1. We need homelessness response. And they stop, they don't do anything. They just, we went out, we saw there's somebody living in this vehicle. There's no further action by our parking enforcement team until we are, until there's indications that they're actually needed there.
And this is my last question. And there's not a registry where folks can elect to be on a registry for saying, hey, I'm living in my car in the city of Bremerton that in-park can access. Is there?
I'm afraid I simply do not know the answer to that one. It's a good question.
It'd be a good resource.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. That's all. I appreciate your explanation and time. You're welcome. Thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Reblowski.
Yeah, Ms. Monroe, the biggest complaint that I've heard on the west side of, or central west Bremerton, is the same vehicles parking too close to an alley entrance. So it's, makes it impossible for waste management or other service vehicles to service that alley. Do you have any suggestions? I mean, it's not like in-park can go out every morning on trash pickup days to see who's parked too close again.
Right. It's a big city, and there are a lot of streets and a lot of alleys, so they just can't be everywhere. But what we've done is we've requested that waste management notify us. If they have reached an alley that they cannot get into, they actually are to use Bremerton 1 on their tablets and apps and notify us, and they do prioritize that call. So if waste management is saying we are not able to access this alley, and they definitely want to do that, that means another return trip for them. And there's been a training for this. I have found, you know, called from a citizen, I reached out to waste management. How come you didn't report it to me? And it's, as a new driver or the driver forgot. But I will continue that message with waste management, continue to keep training all of your drivers. Notify us as soon as you find a blocked alley, and we will go out there. That's the most efficient way. And it's the most sure way because we know that it's not, you know, if that citizen reports to us, we're going to go out there and verify it. And, you know, they literally have a yardstick that they use because we've been in a lot of different situations. But the best way is for us just to continue to have waste management notify us. We can't get to this place. And then we know without a shadow of a doubt that that need is real. They're going to prioritize at the highest level. And, you know, just gets through all the, you know, he said, she said, and the, you know, is this really five feet or not? You know, can someone get through or all those concerns? So that's what we recommend.
Yeah, in the past, the city used to paint the curbs red. I mean, people are supposed to know that they can't park that close to an intersection or an alley. And we have a lot of people who've moved here from other states and aren't aware or just are doing it anyway. So another issue that, I have a question about all the extra enforcement in the east side, and is that because of the density of the neighborhoods with, like, old East Park? I forget what they call it now. So that is, so is that two-hour parking up there?
So there are no permit programs on the east side, but we do find safety issues. So our focus there is simply safety. So Lebo Park, definitely some of the parks, there's need there, that's continued need. But the development there has created more residential calls. And you'll see it's actually not that many hours in which they're over there a month. But it's a small amount compared to many of the other zones. But we do, we did determine that it was, it was time to allocate time over there in the contract that it couldn't be covered simply with random patrol and online, you know, on-call response. It's sort of out of the way. So if you're, you know, responding to on-call and random patrols in the south end of the city, makes it really difficult to then drive all the way north to those same types of responses in one day. And then you're really expanding the time that you're responding to those on-call responses. So just having somebody over there every day made it much easier to, okay, on-call responses, you're over here. You're looking for any safety concerns as well in our regular areas.
So is that like blocking crosswalks or ADA ramps, those types of concerns?
Exactly.
Blocking a hydrant?
Yeah, blocking a hydrant, blocking within, you know, parking within 20 feet of a stop sign, 30 feet of an intersection. Those are the big concerns against traffic.
All right. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. I get the hand signal that we got one council member online that'd like to ask a question.
Hello? Okay, so I'd like to thank in-park and Ms. Monroe for all of the hard work they did in detailed answers to my many questions. One of their answers was that they have repeatedly attempted to enforce a couple of landscaping trucks that stick out of an alley between Lafayette and Cambrian near 15th that at regular intervals prohibit waste management from tracking, from collecting on that alley. So it'd be great if there were a mechanism for repeated reminders to move into something a little more effective because, especially in the summertime, having your garbage sit around for two weeks is kind of a son of a gun. Thank you all, and I'd really like to thank Council for referring this to the Finance Committee and making a deep dive on this topic. Thank you.
Okay, last call for questions and concerns from the council. Seen none. Call for the questions.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Reboulowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes general business.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll turn to council reports. This is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or plan to attend, or speak on any other city-related topic. Since this is the last council meeting of the month, we'll start with District 6 Councilmember Anna Mokler, Ms. Mokler, Councilmember Mokler. Go ahead, please. Anna, you've got the floor. Yeah, I'm hearing just, Councilmember Mokler, I'm hearing a faint, I think here you go. Go ahead.
Better now? Okay. So next slide, please. Great. So the Eco Forum was really well-attended. This is a shot at 5:01, and by 5:15, there were 27 people who came up with very concrete ideas about what ecological issues the Bremerton residents would like us to focus on. And the short, very short version is protect the water, all the water. The water in the watershed, the water in the streams, the water in the wetlands, the water in our pipes, everything. And then protect the trees that protect the water. So thank you to all the residents who showed up. Thank you to Director Tim Barker, who answered questions from the audience that I could not, like, why don't we have fruit trees as street trees? And to Great Peninsula Conservancy, Monica Montgomery, and to Kitsap Environmental Coalition, David Odstrend. It was a very, very fruitful, engaged meeting. Thank you. The next meeting in October will focus on Government 101. Who does what? How do you talk to them? And again, thanks to Chris Smith and Hillary Hamilton, who will be presenting on Bremerton 1. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Audit Committee has two community members, and one, Marwan Cameron. His term is coming to an end. He is still interested in serving. We also have to publish this so that the community can apply for the City of Bremerton's Audit Committee. Okay, so here's the thing. If you're interested, visit the city's website to apply, bremertonwa.gov. Next slide, please.
That's the last one for you.
Okay, well, then I'm done with slides. Thank you, and thank you all for supporting Pride. I'm very proud to be on a council that is interested in inclusivity to the point of making regulations and resolutions to approve it. Very, very proud of you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Good now. Do you have any slides?
Yep. Thank you. I'm a little distracted tonight. All right. Oh, this is super exciting. So they're going to be doing the ribbon cutting for the murals that have been put under the Wykow Overpass, so the bridge there right before Kitsap Way for 11th comes into Kitsap Way. So underneath the community has done some large-scale painting, but they've also had local community members, and I believe it was, it was anonymous. And they were, so the art was selected by a team without knowing who the artists were. And so it was really exciting. Actually, I'm going to throw props to Rema, who has one of the artists who had a piece selected. So there, I think they're all in right now, at least the first go at it. I drove past it just the other go, got it. I drove past it just the other day to, to take a peek. And anyways, very exciting Saturday, the 27th, 1 to 2:30. Park and Calo, visit some of the shops down there, make it over for the ribbon cutting. It's going to be a good time. So. Is that it? Okay. I I'm gay. Just want to say that. I want to say it loud, and I want to say it proud. I was the city's first openly gay city council member. I was the city's first openly gay council president. I have run Kitsap County Pride for 27 years to affect change, to support people, to show love to people. I reject the violence. I find it deplorable that the flags were put at half-mast on the eve of September 11th. And they were not considered for a Congresswoman in Minnesota who was shot with her husband in their home. We are teaching the wrong things. We are opposing the wrong things. But there's a separation between church and state. Have your opinions. You don't need to bring them here because we're good. You mentioned reality also. I just want to say that I'm living in reality. And a book that you have faith in is very different from reality. I love you all. I love some of you more. That's all I have.
Vice President Rebalauski.
Last week, we had a a meeting up at the Bremerton Food Line that all community members are invited to attend. You don't have to live in District Four to come to a District Four meeting. The guest speakers was, were Marwan Cameron and Don Michelle Wilson. And they told other community members what they're doing to help our unhoused folks and what we as a community can step up and do ourselves to help them help others. So it's an ongoing conversation. We ran late and there's still a lot of things left unsaid. So I look forward to the next time that we have another meeting with a subject matter. My next meeting in October, I haven't confirmed the date. It'll be on a Thursday night. And I'm going to be the special guest speaker. And we're going to talk about the city council goals and priorities. We set up two years of priorities last year, and we've made it through some of them. We're working on others. But I want to hear from the community what other goals you want us to put our efforts on trying to solve with the help of other community members. We need your support if you want things to be changed in the city. So I look forward to people coming. Most likely, it'll be the third Thursday of the month, but I will know that for sure. At my next council report, and it will be at Bremerton Food Line. They have a beautiful lobby. And they're very welcoming to, for us to use it. Because there's really no meeting spaces at all, public spaces in West Bremerton. So someday, maybe we could have a community center over there. Do I have another slide? Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming tonight. Interesting points of view. I don't share the same point of view as everybody, which is what makes our country great. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Hey, Councilmember Coughlin.
Thank you, Council President. And before I get to my slides, I I just feel sad. I am sad the folks in our community resulting to personal insults, to denigrating language. And there's just a lot of ignorance. And I think we can do better. I think we can all do better. Getting on the issues, what I do appreciate is the frustration expressed at a lax response to many of the depressing issues in the city. And I'm going to get into my slides. It's nice to see a sewer project. It's nice to see a poet laureate. But it would be nice to see a response to the frustration on permitting and empty buildings on response to those who are unhoused and many of the challenges in our city. It would be nice to see plans and actions on that. And that brings me to my first slide. Oh, not titled. Next one. Thank you. There we go. I do want to commend our, our staff and finance to really highlight a piece of transparency. So I've spoken pretty firmly about the budget that was passed last year. The mayor proposed that is going to take an extra 14 million out of our general fund over two years and leave us with basically one month's worth of expenses in the bank, living paycheck to paycheck. And I'm going to keep seeing loudly, this needs to be addressed. And I know other council members have spoken about this too. As we go into budget season this fall for a mid-biennium adjustment, we need a, we need a course correction. And we need a plan, and we need a way to tackle this before it's too late. So on, on one hand, what's really good is the city does put out monthly status budget reports. So this tracks our, our actual amount of spending, what's budgeted. And it goes right down to every, every department, almost every line item. So I encourage folks to check those out. They're, they are great. There was a hiccup a couple of months ago that they were not coming out on a timely basis, but they are now. So I'm glad we were able to push for that, and that's coming out. But I want to, on the right side there, mention what the county's doing. So the county recognized early on that they were going to be in a tough budget situation. And as far back as early June, the three commissioners, who are both executive and legislative, published an op-ed in the Kitsap Sun, and they said, hey, we are facing a tough budget crunch, and we're going to have tough choices ahead of us. And they launched a whole community survey to find out from the county what their priorities were for budget. If cuts need to be made, where do those cuts get made? And now they are hosting a series of budget hearings and meetings to work on that. And what I want to highlight is that the top there is that the county has an $8 million shortfall in their general fund. They, they have a, an overall budget of over $600 million, several times that of Bremerton. Their general fund is several times that of our city. And they are holding these meetings in these community meetings with transparency and urgency over 8 million. And here we're looking at a 14 million shortfall for the budget a third the size. We need, we need to move on this. It is urgent. All right, next slide. Onto two happier news. Wanted to commend Josh Farley and everyone involved in bridging Bremerton. Last week, it was a really great turnout. And I really wanted to highlight a local great neighbor, Michelle Moshe, who has taken this kind of abandoned remnant of a building and the walls in New Evergreen Park and turned it into a beautiful mural. I just want to credit, I'm going to mess up the last name, but Megan Radell, the Kitsap Sun, took the, the bottom left and top right pictures to give credit because they were just so lovely. So it was really nice. The walk actually started there and commemorating Michelle's work and beautifying the city. And as we went across too, it was nice to talk to folks and, and say, hey, we've got the great Warren Bridge Project coming up. We're going to get 12 feet on the west side, sorry, on the east side, five foot on the west side. Folks are really excited for that. I, I would be reticent, though, though not to highlight that we did get a briefing recently that there was another hiccup on this project. And that unfortunately due to some oversight, and it's not clear why yet, funds that were being used for design were not carried forward in the state's 2025 to 2027 budget. So it's so far caused a delay of about two weeks. The project's moving again. But in the interest of transparency, we, staff have told us that this is not the only project affected, that we're not sure which, but other projects are affected. But it's been a couple of weeks now, and I really hope at the end of the day, we can find out how, where this oopsie occurred among city and state, and just to make sure it doesn't happen again. Because every delay on these projects that are already very delayed really, really costs us. All right, next slide. All right. Also want to, want to commend. I know Counselor, Vice President Rebalauski did this last year in the Citizens Police Academy. I've been attending this year. And it's a really great way for citizens to get insight into our police department, how they operate, how investigations are carried out, how they do patrols, the daily, daily challenges they face, and also for citizens to give input back to the police department on, on how they feel as citizens and, and what, what could be better, as we should always strive to ask. But I wanted to commend here Officer Young. The K-9 unit came the other week. And just really impressive on, on what these dogs can do and the officers that handle them. So kudos for having the Citizens Police Academy. And just one last slide, I believe. Hey, and to announce this is the exciting Kitsap Children's Museum, local nonprofit, trying to start a children's museum in Bremerton, is going to be right here at Norm Dickson September 27th. Was happy to be the host for them, for the building, and not just the chambers. They're going to be out in the, in the hallways, and they got all these cardboard boxes to build, building Run a City by Kids. So if you want to come and show support, come on September 27th. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Frye.
I would just like to take the opportunity to say that I have never felt so proud to be Michael Goodnow's colleague and friend. And I commend you for your grace. And I thank you for your ongoing efforts to support all of our community, especially our LGBTQ community. So thank you, Michael, and I will see you all soon.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Hello. We have a packed house in, in some ways tonight, and I'm so glad to see some young folks here. It's, it can be a little bit scary when you see the adults getting emotionally charged. It can be also kind of exciting. And you want to be part of it. What I want to say to the young folks out there is to just plant a seed to let you know that you can't pray the gay away. There's just no way to do that. And one day you're going to have friends in your church who are going to identify with the gay community. And I want you to think about being supportive of them and loving them and letting them know that there are people out there that can support them too. And maybe it's something you'll do in opposition to the way your church and your parents believe, and that's okay. I wanted to just kind of briefly touch on the $10,000 that keeps getting mentioned. So this is not an amount that's been reallocated for bathrooms. It's something that we can do in a budget season. What initially happened to the $10,000 that was allocated in, was it 23? 23 budget, but some of it was reimbursed to G2G2, and that was through receipts that we were able to get. And I, and I worked with, with Attorney Fennel and with Marwan Cameron when I was president last year, and we got some of that reimbursed for them. So the 10,000 was not reallocated. It has been absorbed into the budget. And with that, I just would like to claim some time. And I'm going to try to be careful about my language here, but I think a lot of you will understand what I'm alluding to when I read a list. Buffalo Supermarket, predominantly black neighborhood, Buffalo, New York, 10 people. Atlanta Spa, eight people, six of whom were Asian-American women. El Paso Walmart, 22 people, and additional 24 others hurt. Charleston Church Shooting, Emmanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church, nine. Club Q Shooting, 2022, five, and 19 hurt. Pulse nightclub, 49 people, 53 people hurt. Sandy Hook, 27, and additional two. Uvalde, Texas, at Robb Elementary School, 21 and 17. Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School, 17 and 17. Santa Fe High School, 10 and 13. Uncoa Community College, nine and nine. Oikos University, seven and three. Northeast Early College High School, six and three. Puppin' Presbyterian School, six. Santa Monica College, five and one. Rancho Tahama Elementary School, five and 12. Appalachia High School, four and seven. Marysville Pilchuck High School, four and one. Oxford High School, four and seven. University of Virginia, Calberth Parking Garage, three and two. Michigan State University at Brookly Hall, three and five. Westfield Mall, three and three. University of Nevada, Las Vegas, Frank and Estella Beam Hall, three and one. Chardon High School, three and three. This is not a comprehensive list, but I'll just go ahead and, and now. Thank you for coming out today, and I appreciate you, and I love you. Good night.
Okay, folks. So this will not adjourn the meeting. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have two executive sessions. So the way it'll work is we'll meet for in the back here for executive session, 10 minutes to discuss potential litigation is allowed under RCW 42.30.110, parentheses, one, parentheses, I. And action is anticipated. So if you want to stay and hear what the proposed action is and comment, you're welcome to do so. After that executive session, we will go back for a 30-minute executive session. Then after that, we'll adjourn the city council meeting. So you're welcome to stay here, or you're welcome to leave, come and go as you wish. So with that, we are now breaking for executive session.
I wouldn't doubt this.
Oh, I thought you said I'd do you.
Very good.
Okay, folks, we're back in session. Attorney Jack, can you summarize the action before the council, please?
Uh, yes, so the um, proposed motion here would be a move to approve the Purdue Pharma and Sackler settlement agreement. The generic opioid manufacturers multi-state settlement agreement for Algovin Inc., Apatex Corp., Amneal Pharmaceuticals. LLC, Hiccup Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated, Indivior Incorporated. Vitrus Inc., Mylan, Sun Pharmaceuticals Industries Incorporated. Zitis Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated, related to opioids. And authorize the mayor to execute the participation forms, allocation agreement, and any other necessary release forms in the same or similar form as presented. And I have a PowerPoint to discuss the um. It's settlements that uh, I just read out loud. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, as I just read, these are settlements with Purdue Pharma and a number of uh, generic opioid manufacturers. Once uh. It, the allocations in the agreements, uh, the state of Washington is going to receive approximately a hundred and twenty-two point two million. Uh, most of that will be split fifty-fifty with uh, local governments and the city of Bremerton. Um, could receive approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from these. Um, payments would occur over a fifteen-year period. Uh, the payments aren't identical. Um, there is. Higher payment amounts uh, in earlier years and they uh, taper off over the course of fifteen years. Uh, next slide, please. And so the Purdue Pharma settlement, um, it's broken up between Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. Uh, six point five billion from the Sacklers and nine hundred million from Purdue Pharma, which is then going to be liquidated. Uh, to pay for that. And from this one, uh, the city can expect uh. A maximum of approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Next slide, please. This is the generic uh, opioid manufacturers. Um, there's eight of them. I have the numbers listed up there. I won't read them all off. Um, but that's down between them and the city can expect approximately a maximum of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Uh, I think just a few things uh, to highlight about the settlement amounts. Um, what the city receives will be dependent on the participation of other local governmental entities. Um, but so far the state's been able to get full uh, sign on in previous opioid settlements. And as of September fifth, uh, eighty-four had signed on to the Purdue Pharma and sixty-five to the generic uh, manufacturers. Um, I said that's September fifth, so a couple of weeks ago, but they haven't updated it since then. Um, the, like I said, the incentives for participation uh, will ultimately. Um, dictate how much the the city can get, but those numbers that I provided earlier are the potential maximums. Uh, next slide, please. Um, for the one Washington MOU that the city had signed on to previously, there, there is a max fifteen percent attorney's fees. Um, these agreements also have an attorney fee uh, will set aside, so uh. It's a, it's a little difficult to calculate whether. The fifteen percent uh, will actually be paid fully um, from those uh, set asides. And so there is a potential of a fifteen percent maximum. Those numbers already calculated that in. Um, and then some of the settlements uh, include Narcan kits for the state. Um, the state has the option to convert those to cash. Uh, it's strictly up to the state and any cash conversion, the city wouldn't um, take a share in. So, and then uh. Any um, there's an injunction basically in the settlements that prevents the entities from promoting and marketing these opioids. Going into the future. And then this is just a list of the authorized uses for the money. Um, this isn't all of the authorized uh, uses. That list is relatively long. Um, but these are some of the authorized uses uh, for the money. It has to go towards opioid abatement. Um, right now the city has entered into a contract. Uh, with Salish uh, to uh, use opioid money and um. Yeah, I think that's my last slide.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Jet. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the side?
Jose Camacho, friends of Swiss Cove, Rock to Block. The Open Public Meetings Act clearly allows executive sessions. That is to cloak the deliberations of these executive sessions. But I read it and I don't see where it doesn't give you the flexibility to allow the public. Some idea, something, I don't know what, but something. So that in the agenda, the public has some idea, really whether to pay attention or not. These things are not intuitive or natural. To start off from a position of complete secrecy. And then for you to come in and open the doors and what we have in front of us really is a big mystery. Even this presentation was something that in the executive session is about about the police brutality case. Revealed in last week's study session, at least this was something. In that one, it was just like this. You opened up, you allowed comments online. I came in there completely unaware of any context, except what the attorney tried to express. And even then, it was very brief. I had, I had to get clarification because I couldn't hear him. There should be some adjective, some category to let the public know what these executive sessions. Lead to indicate something. The other thing is when you do open up the doors to this allowable secrecy. Because we are starting from ground zero, you guys should have a packet ready. Someone should be dropping off a packet here of the terms of these settlements because we are all in the dark. And the terms on these settlements matter because they affect the public, especially non-disclosure clauses. So I don't know if there's a, a few paragraphs here in the police brutality case. I don't know if we especially Rock the Block will be allowed to know whether the brutality that happened there. Implicates what's happening to the persecution of the homeless now. And that is a really big deal. Because we observe abuses of city power against our unhoused neighbors. We see it. We've investigated it. So you all need to come out here and say whether anything is cloaked with a non-disclosure clause. You need to let us look at the terms and it should be immediately after you come out of here. What's it going to hurt you? Put it here, let the public go through it and then let us object if we see something objectionable. If, if you really care about transparency and accountability. You won't use these laws as risk management, as gamesmanship, because you do. You would take a step further and ask yourself, how can I improve our democracy and be truly transparent?
Hi there, Michael Simon's Personal Business Only. Wanted to thank you very much for the slideshow. I did actually think it was very informative. Uh, and I'm looking forward to see, uh, it is twenty-six thousand dollars a year plus or minus because uh, they said that the. Uh, payments were to change year by year. So I find that kind of interesting instead of just a flat annual payout. Um, and I would have liked to see maybe less than fifteen years, but. I think any money we can throw at this problem that's not coming from our taxpayers is great. And I'm glad that they are having to shut down and suffer the consequences of the uh, epidemic that they caused. So thank you, guys. Good work.
Not going to bend down. I'm Chance Corey. I live in District Five. Um, in a former part of my career, I administered class actions lawsuits. And I want to encourage those of you on council to take the deal. I administered about fifteen different uh, lawsuits against auto manufacturers. I can count on one hand how many times I saw an opt-out who then sued for more win, and I don't need any fingers. So as a class action settlement goes, this is your best chance to get any money out of these people at all. Take what you can get and go. Help solve the problem while you can. Put that money to good use. Put it into treatment facilities. Put it into. I'm sure a huge part of this homeless issue that we are talking about stems from the opioid and the opioid epidemics. Use the money there, but do take this money while you can get it.
Mr. Sorenson, can you check online to see if anyone has their hand up? Okay, so the answer is no. With that, uh, it's been a while. So, Mr. Jet, I know it's a lengthy motion. Would you read that again for the record, please?
Certainly. Uh, a move to approve the Purdue Pharma and Sackler settlement agreement and the generic opioid manufacturer multi-state settlement agreement. For Algovin Inc., Aptox Corp., Amneal Pharmaceuticals LLC, Hiccup Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated. Indivior Incorporated, Biotris Incorporated, Mylan, Sun Pharmaceuticals Industries Incorporated. Zitis Pharmaceuticals USA Incorporated, related to the opioids and. Related to opioids and to authorize the mayor to execute the participation forms, allocation agreement number four. And any other necessary release forms in the same or similar form as presented.
So moved.
Second. Call for the question.
Councilmember Coughlin?
Yes.
Reb Louski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so once again, the meeting's not over. Now we're going to go and convene for executive session for thirty minutes. To discuss legal risks of current proposed action as allowed. Under RCW forty-two point three zero. under RCW 42.30.110, parentheses one, parentheses I, and no action is anticipated. So once again, you're welcome to hang around for 30 minutes, say goodbye to us. We are not going to vote on anything. And, yeah, that'd be the choice I would take, sir, but you're welcome. So now we're going to go ahead and convene for 30 minutes for executive session, and then I'll come out during the meetings. I guess the concierge can say it's upstairs. Yeah, we can do that. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's go upstairs. That's part of our 30 minutes, but yeah. Oh, that's right, it's hot up there.